Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to a common council meeting for Monday, October 21st. Seeing we're all checked in, except District 7 is vacant, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any justice for all.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who've indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address council from the podium first stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Please, sir, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Todd Zieglemeyer, 808 East Cleveland Street, Marshfield, Wisconsin. I'm here because I requested the city remove the no firearms sign from the city hall entranceway. I'd just like to take this opportunity to kind of introduce myself and my issue. I've been a resident of the city of Marshfield since 1984, moving into the area. Upon moving into the area, I served as an auxiliary firefighter with the city of Marshfield and EMT. I worked on the emergency government committee boards. I've most recently have been working on the zoning appeals board, and I serve as an employee as part of the Board of Review. I also, as you can tell, am a concealed carry permit holder. It allows me to carry my firearm throughout the state of Wisconsin, into the state Capitol, into numerous private and public buildings. However, due to the sign here in Marshfield, I cannot carry here without being charged with trespassing. I did address the city through a letter. And one of the issues I brought up is I feel that by posting that sign on the city hall, we also endanger everybody in the building because we basically tell any active shooter that would walk into the building that nobody in this building can protect themselves. So that was just what I wanted to state. I want to take this opportunity to appreciate the city administrator for bringing this matter to the common council. I basically believe that the ordinance doesn't need to be changed. I believe that the ordinance is solid and should retain. But I do believe that just administratively, we should take a look at how we should sign or not sign buildings in the city of Marshfield. So I really appreciate everybody's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone, what else from the public wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item D, consideration of appointment of a successor to complete the unexpired term of an older person for the 7th district. Calling persons have indicated their interest in the position. Mr. Adam Fisher at 1323 East 17th Street, Mr. Ardell Klein, 609 South Olker Avenue. Would either of you like to address the council?
Hello, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Adam Fisher. I, when I saw this seat open up, I actually saw it on Facebook all places. But as I was strolling through Facebook, I came to realize this position was open up. And I've always had a passion for local government. In 2016, I actually filled Pete Henler's vacant spot on the county board. And that started, or at least enhanced, my love of local government. A lot of people, I think, sometimes don't appreciate what you all do here, from the staff level to those in public service. And I do, I always have, even as a young person in school, college, always had a passion for this. And so when I saw the vacancy open up, I believe in public service, I believe in people rising up, and I wanted to do that. So that is a little bit about why I chose to do this. I come, I'll be honest with you, I come with no preconceived ideas, obviously. Because I'm interested, I follow what has been going on in the city, where we currently are on some issues. But I really do want to come in with an open mind, open perspective. I tend to like to do research, understand the issues, and make decisions based on my perspective at that time. So that's just a little bit about myself. I'm willing to take questions if that's appropriate for people to learn more about me.
Any questions, Mr. Fisher? Mr. Budkey?
Oh, no, I'll, I'll wait until the other candidate.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein?
Good evening. My name's Ardell Klein. I'm a full-time resident of Marshfield, a lifetime. I was born in Spencer, came to Marshfield when I was six years old, and been resident ever since. My dad was a businessman in town here, ran a trucking company. For, in past years, I have served on the city recreation committee. I was a member of the Marshall Fire Department for five years. I'm a college graduate, have a business administration degree, major in accounting, and I'm currently retired and going to stay that way. And I'm a member of St. John's Baptist Parish, and I serve on the parish council. And my main reason for wanting to do this is, one, I have time, I'm retired. Used to be a snowbird, would go south for a couple of months every winter. And we have not for the last five or six years, we're staying in Marshfield. I've raised three sons, have five grandsons, a granddaughter, two great-grandsons. And they all have ties to the city of Marshfield. So I'm very interested in maintaining the livability and the viability of the city. And I think I have the time and education to that. Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council for either candidate? Mr. Whittle?
I don't have a question for the candidates, but I see that we're not specifically supposed to be, not expected to be taking action until October 29th. However, one of the main reasons why we were looking to fill this particular seat, rather than wait for the election cycle, was to make sure that that district was represented during the budget process. So at this time, I will move to suspend the rules so that we can cast a vote on one of these candidates so that that individual can be brought up to speed, can have access to all of the budget information that we have access to, as well as any city staff that they may have questions of as we approach the next budget meeting on the 29th.
Thank you. So there is a motion to suspend the rules. A motion and a motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Budkey. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. And motion carries nine to zero. Now, would you have questions, or should we just go to the vote? Oh, all right, they want to ask the, or do they have, they have them?
Yeah, technically, yeah. For both parties.
So we do need a nomination. Mr. Budkey? To nominate both candidates, there's a motion, and a second by Mr. Bargender. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. We're voting on paper, right? Oh, on, just on, on the, but you have nominees. Well, they come up to them. Need some music. All right, thank you very much for the vote. It was, the vote was seven to two. Adam Fisher, congratulations, and Mr. Klein, thank you very much for considering volunteering. Thank you very much, Adam, congratulations. And I believe we'll do swearing in, you give Deb a call to...
It would then take effect at the next meeting on the 29th of October.
All right, thank you both very much. Item E, approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 8th, 2019? Motion by Mr. Preschall, second by Mrs. Spurrows. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Staff updates.
I have three. The first is just kind of a quick apology, going back to the first meeting. We talked a lot about UWSP, and if you remember, our first budget meeting was supposed to be on October 14th. US, UWSP representatives could have made that meeting. They told me they couldn't make the meeting on the 21st, but that they could be available on the 29th. So they weren't here to address some of those questions. They will be here on Tuesday, October 29th. And we can maybe start with any conversation along those lines that we need to before we move on to the remaining budget categories. So I apologize, I didn't say that during that first meeting. Couple other things then, introduction of new employees. I'd like to call Dean Schiller, our street superintendent, to the podium. He's going to introduce two new streets, division employees.
Hey, good evening. So I'd like to introduce two new employees that we have. First is Justin Butcher. He's been hired on as an equipment operator one. Justin started September 25th for the city of Marshfield. Before that, Justin worked for Washington State Department of Transportation as a maintenance tech two in Woodland, Washington. And also then, before he worked for the Department of Transportation in Washington, he worked for Tidewater Transportation and Terminals in Vancouver, Washington. And just to kind of let you know what that part of his job was, is he actually worked on tugboats as a deck mechanic, moving barges up and down the river. The other employee I'd like to introduce to you is Jason Aga. He comes from us, from Nicolai Construction here in Marshfield as a maintenance worker there. Before that, he also worked for Automated Products in Marshfield as a maintenance, including the plant maintenance, equipment maintenance, and snow removal. And Jason also is hired on as an equipment operator one. So I'd like to welcome both, Justin and Jason, to the city of Marshfield.
Thank you, Dean. The other item under staff updates, I'd like to ask Nikki Reiner to come to the podium. Nikki is the Wenzel Family Plaza Coordinator, and she has done an outstanding job in her time in that position and does great work in terms of promoting and getting some activities on the plaza. She's going to present an award that was given to the Wenzel Family Plaza and give a little bit of an update on the 2020 season, or the 2019 season, if you can.
Yes, thank you, Steve, and thank you for inviting me here to give you an update on the Wenzel Family Plaza. We really did have an exciting year in 2019. We hosted 70 events from May to September. By our estimates, we saw approximately 5,000 visitors to those events. During past times, mostly on hot summer days, we saw an average of 20 families enjoying our fountain or splash pad. And so there are definitely, even if we don't have anything going on, families are really coming down and taking advantage of the green space, which is great to see. Our successes included bringing in local restaurants for lunch at the plaza, a beautiful farm-to-table event, Oktoberfest, live music on Friday nights, game nights on Thursday nights, and then yoga on Saturdays, just to name a few. Our focus is to help increase foot traffic to our downtown, provide a space for businesses to hold events, and we will continue to work with everyone just to do that for the city of Marshfield. Our focus for 2020 is also to increase awareness to visitors and show everyone there are things to do in Marshfield. How many times have we heard, there's nothing to do in Marshfield? There is, and the Wenzel Family Plaza is absolutely one of those places to provide entertainment for all. Wenzel Family Plaza had a nice feature in our Your Town Marshfield with W S A W, including a live news broadcast on location. You can also look forward to seeing our great place, our great space on around the corner with John McGivern, and that will actually air early 2020 on PBS. I am very proud to announce organizations around the state are taking notice of our plaza. We've only celebrated one year on July 11th, but the Wenzel Family Plaza has been recognized by winning two awards. Wisconsin Main Street awarded the plaza with Best Public Improvement Project this spring, which, we have this beautiful plaque to show for it. And the American Planning Association Wisconsin Chapter awarded us with Best Places in Wisconsin a few weeks back, which I think is pretty amazing. The jury who decided on the Best Places Award commented, "Wenzel Family Plaza exemplifies the promise of great public spaces to activate Wisconsin's smaller downtowns. Its multifunctional design allows for a broad variety of programs, civic events, year-round. The project has already delivered tourism benefits for the local economy and will continue to evolve as a center of Marshfield's community life. I couldn't have said it better myself, I really couldn't have." We will continue to program, we'll continue to build on our current programming, and I am excited for what we have in store for the plaza in 2020. I can tell the community is excited about the space, and I, along with the Wenzel Family Plaza Committee, will continue to work diligently to provide quality entertainment for our downtown. I'm, thank you again for the support that we have from the city and the common council, and I look forward to just continuing to grow this beautiful space that we have.
Thank you, Nikki, and that's all I have under staff updates tonight.
All right, next item is mayor comments, and John Lutz Relly, fire and rescue, November 7th, 1994, 25 years. So congratulations to John, and thank you very much for that many years of service. I just want to remind everybody that this coming Saturday, October 26th, at the Marshfield High School from 9:00 to 5:00, is going to be a free, there'll be free healthcare, free dental care, and free eye care. Dental care will include cleanings and extractions and overall exams, visions. They will have vision, free vision care. If you do require glasses, it would only be $10 for the frames and free healthcare. So it's, plan on being there for a little while, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people. And we're really glad that that's here. The other thing, in our earlier meeting, I think we really saw the benefit to council members during the time for council comments and reports from commissions, boards, and committees, that you all take that time to communicate with each other because I think that there's some things going on, and maybe we don't hear about them. And then when they actually come up on agenda, it can be confusing. So hopefully, we'll do that. That's the end of that. Item H, council comments. Any council comments? Nope, okay. Item I, reports from commissions, boards, and committees. Mr. Whittle?
I think I'll take this opportunity then. Since I'm on the Park, Rec, and Forestry Committee, I'm sure Justin won't mind if I mention that there's an event happening this Friday. I don't recall exact times. 1 o'clock Friday afternoon is going to be the ribbon cutting of the new cougar exhibit. And I know that the Park and Rec Committee has been pretty excited about that. So that's down at Wildwood Park, in case anybody wants to head down that way.
Thank you, Mr. Budkey.
Speaking of cougars, I will be married this Saturday, 45 years. Actually, she's younger than I am. And my son will be getting married the same day. And, you know, and I've never forgotten my anniversary in all the years. But my son said to me, we're going to get married on the 26th of October. And these two feet of mine went right in my mouth. I said, why did you pick that date? And I'm trying to recover.
Well, congratulations, 45 years.
He's a lot older.
All right, item J, consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and place on file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Henler, second by Mr. McSwain. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. And motion carries nine to zero. Item L, presentation, concerns on e-cigarettes and vaping introduced by Steve Barks, city administrator.
Thank you. About a month ago, it was brought up at a council meeting. I think council member Budkey might have been the one who raised the concern about vaping in particular, along with e-cigarettes and some of the health issues we're hearing that are going on as a result of use of vaping and e-cigarettes. We've been taking a little look at what the city policy and city ordinance says, but we thought it'd be good to have someone here to make a presentation. And tonight, Megan Pickler and Jenna Flynn, and I believe Jenna will be making the presentation just to get us up to speed on some of the health concerns and what's being discussed in the area of e-cigarettes and vaping. So Jenna, take it away.
All right, thank you. Our introductions are done, so I don't even have to do that. But I just want you all to know that our coalition serves Marathon, Wood, and Portage Counties. And I'm actually based out of Marathon County Health Department. So thank you all for having us here tonight.
Yeah, I'm Megan Pickler. I'm a health educator at Marshfield Center for Community Health Advancement. And I serve the Northwoods Coalition. Jenna's definitely the expert in this area. But I'm here just to share kind of the Marshfield story tonight of what we're seeing here in our community.
And we know that you guys have already had a meeting before this, and you have agenda items after this. So we're going to pack a punch, make this short and sweet, and probably save questions for the end. And if there's things that need to be done afterwards, we're happy to be resources going forward. So in terms of what we're going to talk about today is, we're going to talk about some of the products that we're seeing with youth usage, we're going to talk about the trends, and then we're going to talk about resources available. So in terms of e-cigarette usage, right now, one in five Wisconsin high schoolers are using e-cigarettes. Who has heard a story about vaping or e-cigarettes on the news in the last few months? Raise your hand. Okay, so pretty much anybody who is informed. So it's definitely a problem. It's not just in this county, it's statewide, it's nationwide. Middle school, we're seeing similar issues. It's not just the high schoolers, one in nine middle schoolers have tried in the state of Wisconsin.
And so this is our youth risk behavior survey results from May 7th. And this is directly from the Unified School District of Marshfield, so both of them is high school, public high school. And so out of 562 students that took that survey, 10th and 12th graders, 9.4% reported that they're using e-cigarettes in the past 30 days. They did take a 2019 survey. We don't have the specific results for the Unified School District of Marshfield, but we do have county data that was just released on Friday, so Jenna has that for us.
Yeah, so I don't even have the presentation updated because we just got notified of it on Friday. So in terms of use for Wood County, the information from last year tells us that 21% of high schoolers are current users, which is up from the last data set that we had. 41% of high schoolers have ever used, so you're looking at one out of every two to three students. And then for middle schoolers, we have seven... And then for middle schoolers, we have seven percent are currently using. So definitely something to be concerned about when we're looking at almost half of the high schoolers in the county have tried these products.
And I just want to point out quick that the high school does have a new position, the AODA coordinator, not to be confused with the counselor, and so we're really working this year to join efforts with the School Resource Officer, Matt Barris, at the high school, and this new position to identify those problem areas within the school. Just talking with Matt, students are truly addicted to this substance, so also just talking with Rick before this meeting, we're really going to be looking at what we can do about that, and really focusing on nonpunitive approaches, so that we're actually, I guess, the real issue underlying the usage of those cigarettes.
So in terms of actual products, this is just an image of some of the basic products, some of the older generation products that we've seen, and when we talk about vapor products, e-cigarettes, Juul's, e-hukas, anything like that, they all fall under this category called electronic nicotine delivery systems. So that's just for you to be aware of, when you're hearing and seeing these things in the news, they all fall under one category, and the purpose is for the user to inhale any kind of substance that is in the device. Most of the time nicotine, but in some cases not. You've probably heard about THC being in some of the products, but really, if the, if the substance can be vaporized, it can go in one of these products. So Megan is going to pass around some of the newest e-cigarette products that we've been seeing in the school districts, some that have been confiscated, and, and just like what's on the image on the PowerPoint here, they're all intended for the same use, and believe it or not, they are e-cigarettes in some way, shape, or form. So I think all of us in the room remember when smoking was still legal in bars, restaurants? Raise your hand. Do you remember that? Okay, not even that long ago, right? It's crazy to think that this was one time legal, and even in airplanes and hospitals and things. And now Big Tobacco has not changed their playbook, they've changed their products, and these are some of the advertisements I want to show you in terms of how things have not changed over the years. On the left-hand side of the images, you'll see cigarette advertisements, and on the right-hand side, you will see e-cigarette advertisements. What do you notice here? More of the same. Smoking is sexy, smoking is cool, it's popular, it's easy to do. You can throw it in your suitcase, easy to travel with. Okay? When I see this kind of stuff, it appalls me that this is okay, and this is how our youth are being targeted, and it's all completely legal. This is another image for folks in the room that want to see some of the products that we are dealing with, that some of our school resource officers are dealing with. And then, just as a side note, you know, if there's something, if, if you have an organization that, you know, you want to have more of a discussion beyond this room tonight, that's something that we're, a volunteer you two, we're happy to do to come to your table as well, if you want to talk about this more. So Juul is the most famous e-cigarette on the market right now. Who has heard of Juul in this room? All right, very informed group, I appreciate that. So we know that Juul has taken over seventy percent of the e-cigarette market. It is all over the place, it's rampant, it's highly potent in nicotine, highly addictive. There's not a Juul product that does not sell without nicotine in it, and this is just a video to show how Juul really took over the e-cigarette market. It's just a couple minutes long. In case you're new, everyone at my school, Juul is something that is literally sweeping the nation everywhere I go. It is a whole thing.
Yo, what is going on, guys?
Today's video is going to be a Juul sesh. We got the mango pod.
The cool cucumber.
Fruit medley.
I've got this creme pod, because I thought it would be festive.
It tastes great.
Well, if you want a head rush, definitely the Juul.
My God, bro, give me the biggest nick buzz.
The Juul challenge, you gotta hit this thing as many times as you can.
We're doing the Juul Hot Box Insane Nick Buzz Challenge, you dig?
I got some accessories.
Type in charging case for Juul.
Rolo bag.
Sorry, drop.
This one is watermelon, it is literally so good.
And so within that video, they showed a lot of different flavors that especially the Juul company promotes, like candy and green apple and all the fun flavors, obviously geared towards youth. New legislation just late last week came out, and Juul is banning all flavors except menthol. So, so step in the right direction, not good enough in my opinion, we'll continue to work towards banning of all.
Yeah, so the other piece of that, Megan highlighted that mint and menthol are not going to be removed, and we know that young people always, almost the majority that start before, you know, at an early age, they tend to choose menthol-flavored cigarettes, and they don't have to advertise anymore. They already made their money, that you saw, they have YouTube channels, the kids are advertising for them, so they really don't have to do anything. But what we do want you to take away is that the kids are not the enemy here, it's the industry, and they are targeted. So these are just some more of the products that we're seeing. I guess the big takeaway I want us, want you to know here is that none of these products are regulated at this time. This is being considered at a federal level, but it's just something to take notice of. And in terms of why we should be concerned, you've seen in the news, but I do want to direct you to some of these resources, if you have not seen them already. The CDC is updating their website pretty much weekly with vaping-related illnesses and deaths. I did not put it in the presentation because it's increasing nearly on a daily basis. So right here, you can see there are thirty-three confirmed deaths. There has not been a specific substance or product that has been connected to these. There's been a lot of different products, different substances, some just nicotine, some THC, some both, but there's no conclusive evidence that says this is one substance causing all these illnesses. There's a lot of different illnesses happening as well. And then I won't go into this link, but the Department of Health Services actually has their own, I just went into it, I lied, they have their own updates as well. So if this is something, you know, if you want a copy of this presentation, I'm guessing this is being recorded, right? That's all available to you as well. So in terms of what's happening in Wisconsin, you might have heard on the news some things around Tobacco Twenty-One, looking at flavors, looking at clean indoor air, there's a lot of things actually being discussed, not a ton of movement yet, and at the federal level, a lot of these things are being considered as well. So I do have some notes here in terms of what can be done locally and what can't be done locally. Wisconsin is preempted from some things related to tobacco prevention. So in terms of what you can do locally, is address clean indoor air in all workplaces, in terms of updating your ordinance to include e-cigarettes. Wood County has their policy updated, but I don't believe the city of Marshfield does. Clean indoor air in government-run facilities, including behavioral health facilities and prisons, tobacco-free parks, beaches, trails, which I know that has come up recently, zoning restrictions on retailers. So those are things that can be done locally. What can't be done locally is taxation, age restrictions, youth access in terms of placement, flavored tobacco restrictions, and smoke-free outdoor spaces in businesses. So that kind of gives you an overview of that, because we do have questions, and these things have come up, and it's important to be informed, so that's why we're so happy to be here before something is on your agenda.
So in the city of Marshfield, we're really lucky to have a very active youth coalition called MACI. Many of you know MACI, Marshfield Area Coalition for Youth. The city has supported it for a number of years now, and we do many educational presentations about this very topic, vaping. So the drug trends presentation that we do, MACI partners with the Marshfield Police Department and delivers a drug trends presentation that includes vaping to all sixth graders at both the Columbus and public school level, and that's twice a year for, we've been doing that the last ten years. So they do get this information. We've also developed an ACP lesson for the high school teachers, so they get trained in this lesson on vaping and marijuana, and then turn around and deliver that information to their students. And then we're also engaging with the public in public presentations. Jenna has come in and done a lovely job at educating our public on these dangers.
So these are just some additional resources. We are resources to you as well. So based on how I'm funded, I cannot tell you what to do, what you should do, what you can do, but what I can do is provide you education and facts for you guys to make a decision as a common council, and I believe that's kind of Megan's position too. So we're very, very happy to be a resource to you, and that's what we have in terms of content. Thank you.
Mr. Butky.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Steve's right, I'm the one that brought this up to, to look at this. This is actually the third presentation that we've had. We've had one on the Common Council before, and one on the Health and Human Services for Wood County, and I would, I would ask Steve to put that on the agenda, and maybe with your help, would you help put on the ordinance to update it, to take care of some of these things, so we can ban them from inside buildings and so on and so forth? Do you guys provide help with that or not?
So we have model definitions, we don't have a model policy, but whoever the contact is, person is for me, I can send you information on best practice around that, what other cities are doing. A lot of cities and local or municipalities are updating their policies, so it's not something where the wheel has to be reinvented here. So if I know where to send it, that's definitely something, we can deliver that information for you.
I'm sure, I'm sure Steve needs help, or the attorney needs help, it would affect you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think it would be good if, if the body feels that way as well when this conversation is over, that I would work with Jenna and Megan and the city attorney, and get a sense of, you know, what you have, take a look at what we currently have. I've asked city attorney to look at our current ordinance regarding tobacco products, and then try to pull together something to share with you perhaps next month as to what you could do if you feel led to, to pursue one of the avenues that was discussed as a local opportunity.
Mr. Bargender.
You were passing around that liquid, that vapor, and that eyedropper bottle, and I smelled of it, and I accidentally dropped a couple little drips here on the counter, and I wiped it off, and it actually dulled the top of my counter. So whatever's in there, I highly recommend that people vaporize this and take this into their body, because it looks awful toxic to me. Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, thank you very much, it was a great presentation.
Thank y'all for having us.
Thank you.
All right, next, I believe we're putting item M and N together, Presentation Review Proposals Received and Health Insurance Options for a Calendar Year 2020 for the All Benefit Eligible City Employees, introduced by Jen Requ.
Thank you. There we go, now we're set. Thank you. Wanted to talk to you tonight about two of our benefits coming up. It's almost annual enrollment for the city, and so we need to make some decisions in the next week or so in regard to our health plan and our long-term disability plan. Those are the two benefits that went up for RFP this year, and we've got some responses. To my right, we've got John Price and Wendy Rosenthal from M3, and they're going to go through the details of the renewals for both plans. However, I wanted to just provide you a little bit of history before we get started. First thing is, for our health plan, we have two plans, a traditional plan, a high deductible health plan with an HSA, so two separate plans that we've offered to our employees for a number of years now. As we went out for bid, we did look at renewing the same plans as they are today, same deductibles, same out-of-pocket maximums, no changes to the plan design. And so as we're looking at our current distribution of staff on the plans, we currently have a hundred and sixty-two of our employees that are on the plans, eighty-two percent of those are on the HSA, and the rest are on our traditional plan. And so one of the things that we've talked about for a number of years now is, at some point, we wanted to consider going to a single plan, and so that is in the proposal this year, it's something for you to consider. And then again, whether or not we want to at some point look at our employee contribution to the HSA, but that, we'll save that for another day. For our disability plan, we did go to bid for that one as well, as I had mentioned. Long-term disability provides employees with sixty, sixty percent of their income on a monthly basis, after a ninety-day elimination period for up to five years. And so just to give you a little bit of context around what we're looking at tonight, if you do have questions, we can certainly take those at the end, but right now I'd like to turn it over to John.
Thanks, Jen. I, I too will try to be brief, insurance is a little dry, but it's, there's quite a bit here to go over. I may skip a few sections just to help everyone out, and then you can, you can kind of ask, ask me to go back if you need to. So looking at the agenda, we're going to talk about the 2020 renewal from Security Health Plan, the renewal analysis, which will include a discussion about the RFP, since we did take it out to bid, some recommendations for 2020, as Jen had mentioned, and then just kind of open it up for questions. This is the part where I won't go over every detail. It just shows you that your current period had bill charges of two point eight million, the prior period was three point three million. There were claims in excess of what's considered like a pooling point, some people call it a stop loss. You also had claims that, you know, that are, you actually charged, you're charged an amount to have those claims pooled, and that's the two hundred and eleven thousand. The main thing to, to make notation here is that your claims are moving in the right direction, which we like to see. You know, it isn't quite where it needs to be, but they're moving in the right direction. If you look at the end result, your claims put you in a position where Security Health Plan feels they need a seven point nine percent increase to cover your claims and administrative costs for next year. We don't just automatically accept that, we looked at four other HMOs and five other insurance companies, as well as an RFP process. The result was that we did not have favorable bids from other carriers, nor did we find in the analysis that, unfortunately, that their renewal was fair, you know, unfair or not reasonable. So, you know, it is a scenario where we do feel, based on looking at the nine other insurance companies, that you're in a spot where, you know, realistically, it probably does make sense, as most employees are still utilizing Marshfield Clinic to renew a Security Health Plan. When we recalculated the renewal, we actually came out with a nine point two percent renewal, that's slightly higher than the seven point nine that Security Health Plan came out with. So our recommendations, you know, it is to renew a Security Health Plan. One thought might be to eliminate that traditional plan, which Jen had mentioned. If you eliminate the traditional plan, obviously those, those employees end up going on the high deductible health plan with a health savings account. There are some advantages to that. There are some advantages to that. An already high deductible, you know, for employees, this would give them an opportunity to budget for that deductible using a health savings account, which rolls over year after year and can be used to build up toward, build up towards retirement. Since most of your group's on that, you really wouldn't be in a situation where, you know, you need to be as concerned with that. If you look at the other things that you can do, onsite telehealth, Care My Way, Nurse Line, Marshfield Clinic Specialty Pharmacy, those are going to be continued areas of focus to try and manage cost. The vice president contacted us as recent as yesterday saying, I'm sorry, Friday, saying he would like to expand what you're already doing with Care My Way even further. We're not sure what he means by that because you've already put in, you know, an onsite, onsite devices that enable people to take advantage of Care My Way here at the city. But I think that's positive. We know that Marshfield Clinic wants to work with you guys to continue to manage cost. The net effect of these changes would be that seven single people and 22 families would move on to the traditional plan. The annual premium, you know, is going to go up, but it's not going to go up by as much. The renewal calculates at a 4% rather than a 7.9 by transferring people to the high deductible health plan in conjunction with an HSA. The city ends up saving on the increase. And I want to be clear about that. It's a little bit like when they say the deficit is being reduced. You're reducing the rate of increase. So loosely, you know, carefully use the word savings of $84,000 for the city and roughly $14,000 for the employee. Covering the disability RFP, we looked at the Hartford, Mutual of Omaha, Reliance, Standard, Unum and Guardian. You're currently with Lincoln Financial. The results were good. A few had declined to quote. But the end result was that there was a competitive bid with Unum. That competitive bid results in savings to the employee of $20,000. We were, you know, admittedly even a little surprised by how competitive it was. So, you know, you're paying about, employees are paying about $40,000, $840 for their long-term disability plan. And believe it or not, it's pretty much cut in half at 20,778. So our recommendation is to make a change from Lincoln to Unum for the long-term disability plan. Are there questions about either the health insurance, the health insurance renewal process, the RFP, the renewal analysis, or the changes recommended for the disability carrier?
Mr. Butke.
Maybe this is for Jen. I would personally, I'd like to see the traditional plan go away and go to the HSA. But the employees, Jen, that, that want, want to stay on the traditional, what's the reasoning for that? Are they losing out on something by going to this or what have you heard?
Yeah, I mean, every, every situation is a little bit different. What I've heard in the past is actually that some people liked the pharmacy benefit better on the traditional plan, which meant they didn't have to meet their deductible first. They got to pay front versus having to pay right away. You know, in preparation for tonight's meeting, we did, working with Steve, sent out an email to all staff just to say this is something that was going to be on the council agenda tonight and that if, if there were questions or concerns to contact us, I believe we had two emails that came back. One of them, or both of them were pro-security health plan and hoping that we didn't go back to WEA trust. And the other one just had a question in regard to age and whether or not there was any concern in regard to their ability to remain on an HSA or to have an HSA plan. So that's really kind of where we're sitting now. Steve, I don't believe any more responses that I'm aware of.
No, I was gone Friday and really today until very late in the afternoon, but I saw my email from a distance and there were no additional responses.
I would, I would just say when people call me, they will tell me their name and their address and I don't mention names. So if there's any staff members that want to get ahold of me and if they got something else that they don't feel comfortable talking to you guys for whatever reason, otherwise I'm for getting rid of that plan and going to the HSA. Thank you.
Mrs. Burrows.
So I just have a couple of specific questions about security health plan in general. Is security health, is the Marshfield Clinic the only in-network provider if, if they carry security health?
It's not. They can go to Aspiris, they can go to Ascension, they can go to the Marshfield Clinic. And the reason why we look at that in particular, we actually go through the claims information that John and Wendy provide. And we've got over 95% of our employees that utilize Marshfield Clinic, hospital system and health system in general, whether it's an individual provider, the clinic or the hospital. And so that's where our employees are going right now. So it's really important for us to keep them in the Marshfield Clinic in the network.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure that all employees did have a choice and it wasn't just.
And those are the, kind of the three main in the area that I referred to. There are more.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions? Steve?
Just to ask one clarifying question. I feel weird about this given my role and I've talked to you about some of these things before, John. But when you indicate the savings from going to the all HSA, that doesn't take into account the city making contributions to those employees' accounts, correct?
That's correct.
Which we would presumably do. We've been doing that 600 single and 1,200 family for several years now. Thank you.
Mr. Jockick.
What is U and the disability, U N U M, what does that stand for?
You know, that's really interesting. I don't know. Unum has been around a long time. It's a nationwide carrier. It's a Fortune 500 company and I don't know what U N U M stands for. I'll have to look into that.
I recognize all the other names on here.
Yeah, Unum.
I've never heard that, that term, so.
Yeah.
Good to me.
Any other questions?
Any further questions? So no action, you're not requesting any action tonight, but it will be on our agenda for the 29th. Is that correct?
Yeah, we were looking to get direction regarding to the health plan as of the 29th. Certainly your discretion if you wanted to approve disability in the meantime, or if you wanted to save that discussion for the next.
We thought there might be some interest in approving the disability tonight with John's recommendations if you see fit. Jen and I really would like the chance to talk a little bit with each other and then with you again on the 29th about making a determination for the employee health, given the discussion about traditional and HSA and those types of things.
Thank you. Mr. Butke, your motion?
My motion is to go with the disability plan, approve that.
Motion is to approve the disability plan as presented. Second by Mr. Henler, any discussion? Seeing no discussion then, please vote. Mr. Henler. There we go. Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item O, request to approve budget resolution number 12-2019, key card access for the police department, presented by Rick Ramsay, police chief.
Thank you. What we're proposing is to use monies in our budget to install key card access, similar to what this building has, community center, fire department. This is something that was, an estimate was gathered from this back in 2017. We've been, I guess, waiting for the right moment to, to pursue this. The estimate originally was $25,000 to place key card access throughout the building at the police department. I've since been able to negotiate that down to just under $22,000 if we were able to get that completed this year. What this would do ultimately is just make the police department more secure than it currently is. Right now we have keypads that we have to use to enter the building and to enter certain rooms. These are keypads that could possibly be captured on our body cameras. It could be potentially seen by an individual that we don't want to see the code and possibly could then cause some complications if somebody can now access our building. So with a key card access, each employee would be issued a code or each employee would be issued a card similar to the cards that they're currently using here at City Hall and at the fire department. If they lost the card, it could be deactivated. This is also a system that if we did do renovations at the police department in the near future, the system could be kept in place or expanded upon at the current location. So be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, look for your approval.
Thank you. There is a motion to approve by Mr. McWayne and second by Mr. Henler. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Item P, first reading of ordinance number 1402, Hume Avenue Rightofway Annexation, presented by Dan Kinnick, Public Works Director.
Thank you. You'll recall earlier this fall, I brought you a petition for annexing this portion of Hume Avenue Rightofway north of McMillan Street. That petition was then submitted on to the Department of Administration for review. That review has been completed and the annexation is found to be in the public interest. And now the annexation proceed with two readings of the ordinance approved by the council. Tonight is just the first reading of this ordinance. The ordinance and map are attached in your packet. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. If not, the final reading will be scheduled at the November 12th meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Dan?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Item Q, first reading of ordinance number 1420, request by the Unified School District of Marshfield to rezone the properties located at 900 East Fourth Street, parcels 3300186 and 3300189, from SR4, Single Family Residential, to CD Campus Development Zoning District, presented by Bryce Hembrook.
Thank you, Mayor. So the middle school is, well, the school district is proposing to rezone the two middle school properties from SR4, which is Single Family Residential, to CD Campus Development District. The plan is to establish a campus district and to send a campus master plan to Plan Commission in the next few months. The middle school property, the large, the large property was identified as being general institutional in the future land use map. And then the vacant property to the east was identified as being medium density residential. An institutional land use such as a school is appropriate in both of these districts. The school district has already created campus districts for the high school and Madison Elementary. Only two zoning districts surround the subject properties and these are both single-family districts. For the most part, the surrounding land uses are single-family homes except for Athan Hemlock Park to the south and then duplexes to the north. The campus district will be just under 20 acres in size and setback and lot width requirements can be established through the campus master plan approval process. The Plan Commission reviewed this at the October Plan Commission meeting and they recommended to approve this request. However, this is the first reading and no action is required at this time. The final reading will be at the first November Common Council meeting.
Thank you. Questions for Bryce? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item R, first reading of ordinance number 1421, request by United Way to rezone the property located at 612 West Blodgett Street, parcel 3300706, from SR6, Single Family Residential, to UMU Urban Mixed Use District, presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you. So the applicant is proposing to rezone the property from SR6, Single Family Residential, to UMU Urban Mixed Use. This property was recently donated to the United Way to use as their new office. Resoning the property to UMU would allow them to use this, this building as an office and could potentially lead to other commercial land uses being allowed there in the future. According to the future land use map, the subject property is located in the transitional mixed-use district. This district typically consists of residential properties in less intensive commercial areas in close proximity to major or minor arterials, in this case St. Joseph's. And so this is where you can go from a transition of being residential land uses to commercial uses. And by looking at where it's located, it's along St. Joseph and Blodgett and it is located near similar land uses. So we feel that this, you know, change to office land use would be suitable in this area. The properties to the north and east are single-family homes. The properties to southwest and northwest consist of apartments, a hair salon, single-family home, as well as a financial advisor office. The subject property is approximately 13,500 square feet and has street frontage along St. Joseph's and Blodgett. The property will meet all lot width, size and setback requirements in the underlying zoning district. One thing to also mention is due to the change in land use, there will be six required parking spaces. With the current layout of the parking, it would not meet the access or traffic circulation requirements. Thus, we ask that by the time that they would use the building as an office, they would either need to get parking exceptions through the Plan Commission and then you guys, or they should have the parking expanded at that time. So we will stay in contact with them. And they plan on opening the building around April 2020. Plan Commission reviewed this at the October Plan Commission and they recommended approval. And thus, this is the first reading. No action is required at this time. The final reading will be at the November Common Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Bryce? Seeing none. Thank you, Bryce. Item S, first reading of ordinance number 1422, prohibiting smoking in any city park, presented by Justin Casperson, Parks and Rectory.
Thank you. Good evening. This is our first reading of this ordinance, 1422, amending ordinance section 11, subsection 11B. The prohibition of smoking in parks has been discussed for many years. The Parks, Recreation and Forestry Committee approved a policy in 2007 prohibiting smoking in certain areas of parks. We still receive complaints and our Park, Recreation and Forestry Committee still receives complaints from individuals regarding smoking. At our last meeting in September, the Park, Recreation and Forestry Committee meeting amended their current ordinance to ban smoking in all parks in all areas. Their ordinance doesn't, or their policy itself doesn't have teeth. So it's kind of by an honor system. You can shame them or ask them to leave, but our police officers can't enforce that. In their action, they also asked staff to direct changes to the city ordinance and work with our legal counsel on prohibiting parkings, prohibiting smoking in all of our parks. So I had opportunity to work with HEP on the changes to the ordinance, which is included in your packet tonight as directed by the Park, Recreation and Forestry Committee and in working with the mayor, or not the mayor, the county, the city council or city legal council, again, BAC. You have that inserted into your packet tonight. So this is the first reading. There'll be no action tonight, but the first meeting in November.
Thank you. Mr. Butke.
Yeah, I'm all for this. I would just ask that we also include the e-cigarettes in that when it's appropriate.
Mr. Presley.
Just for record, the e-cigarettes is currently in our ordinance. So it was mistaken earlier. The e-cigarettes is currently in our ordinance. So this would also be included in our.
Like many of our ordinances, you know, we can't be everywhere at once. We'd love to be, but our best efforts are to enforce something such as this once there's a complaint. So aside from being complaint-driven, I think, or witnessing somebody smoking in one of the parks, there would be challenges in having, I guess, a consistent enforcement. But we would definitely respond and act accordingly upon witnessing it or being called to somebody smoking in the park. We would not have smoking police. I don't condone police smoking.
Mr. Bargender. Oh, Nick Gilmour?
I just wanted to say that I'm a person myself that
Mr. Bargender.
Question for Justin. If this is approved, what do you have plans for signage?
We'll sign the appropriate areas where we typically would find individuals, sporting areas, zoos, entrances to parks, near our park signage. We'll do the best we can to educate and allow individuals to know where they'll, where they'll be allowed. We would probably allow it in parking lots because the robbers. it in parking lots because they're obviously getting out of their vehicles. But public sidewalks is another area that we will do our best. You know, we can't police everywhere or sign everything, but we'll do, like, we already currently have a zoo signed for no smoking, but we still have individuals using the zoo as a smoking area.
So you're saying you'd have signs where smoking is allowed and where smoking would not be allowed?
We would sign, like Wildwood Station, spectator areas at SJ Miller, the fairgrounds, where our parks currently have signage.
Because it becomes a gray area when you have smoking allowed in one part of the park but not in another. They could walk from the parking lot up to the sidewalk towards Wellwood Station. You know, where do they have to get rid of the cigarette? You know, I mean.
We have the same situation with dog waste. We do our best to sign our parks that they have to pick up dog waste when they enter our facilities, and we have signage throughout our park system. But obviously, we still find dog waste in our park system. We only do so much and you only have so much signage. Thank you.
Mrs. Sprouse.
While it pains me to admit this, I have to agree with Mr. Peschall to a degree. I hate cigarette smoking. I mean, I'm a nurse, and I cannot stand it. But it is a legal substance, and there's a point in time where, you know, infringing on personal rights of people, I just have an issue with that. And banning a legal substance, especially in an outdoor environment, I'm going to have to really consider this.
You know, I'm going to make a couple comments, and I want to be careful because there's a couple of different issues here. You know, there's some discussion about the legality of that. I'm going to start by saying that if you look at our current code, I think this ties in because of the discussion earlier tonight, and the fact that now we are essentially taking and extending it to parks. We have already addressed this in our ordinance, that certain outdoor areas, smoking would be banned. But I'm going to start by saying that we had a discussion tonight about e-cigarettes and vaping. And in fact, at some point along the line, this body had actually incorporated that into our code, and probably at a time when that was even more controversial than it is today. And the draft that I made of this ordinance, I think you are opening yourself up to some issues. And I mean legal issues in the sense that you are talking about, again, doing something that in an outdoor setting, you have to have, any ordinance that you pass has to have a rational relationship to the goal that you're trying to set. That's the reason why in the ordinance, if you look at the way that I drafted it, I did my best to incorporate documentation that this body will be relying on when you come to pass. And again, your decision on this case, on this particular ordinance is up to this body. But hopefully, you look at some of that material, and then there's citations to materials that reference another bunch of written documents. And when you, and assuming you do pass this, you are making those findings that are attached to that ordinance draft. And that's important because we have to be able to say that you had a reason to do what you're doing here, and it has to be under the guise of health, safety, and welfare. So to start off, again, we sort of already have gone down this path with this vaping. If you look, we have a very, very broad definition of electronic smoking device. And then we say that we will treat electronic smoking devices the same as smoking, which would be a smoking tobacco product. So basically, by policy and by that inclusion, you've already made that decision. And, you know, we haven't been challenged on it, but we also, I've never, you know, and I've done an awful lot of prosecution here, and I've never come across that, being charged out. But you would always be subject to challenges, much like what you're talking about, is that, you know, somebody says that this infringes on their personal right. You'd have to take those instances on a case-by-case basis because in general, you're not able to simply, somebody can't come in and just say, hey, that ordinance is invalid. They'd have to have something where they're charged with it to be able to challenge the legality of the ordinance. Now, tying that into the issue tonight, you're now talking about doing these same things, which includes vaping outdoors in these parks. I think you do have an issue in terms of signage, but the way, if you look at the way the ordinance is written right now, as far as the draft in front of you for tonight's ordinance, it is basically banning it in all public parks or public facilities, which means the whole entire area. If you have signage in a particular area, then you're subject to the same sort of discretion that any officer that would write a ticket for anything might have in terms of whether you do that or not. And I think that the question of the signage becomes one as far as due process. But we're back at the same kind of thing we've done before, and I hate to reference the cell phone ordinance, but it's sort of, what is enough notice? And I think if you have signs and you have this ordinance on the books, that's, you know, you basically are banning smoking in public parks altogether, which will include e-cigarettes and the rest. Somebody challenging that, they'd have to do on a specific basis. But just so you understand how these two things play together, and it's up to this body in terms of making that decision. But it will be assumed, if you pass this ordinance, that you will also be executing that findings that are attached to that, which means that you found a reason to do this, and we did our best to try to incorporate that those reasons are legitimate reasons to take this step.
Mr. Butke.
A few years back, I was down at the park area, Wildwood Park area, taking the grandkids down there to play on the amenities there. And what bothered me as much as the smoking was the littering. Kids were playing in the sand out there, and there's cigarette pots all over the place. And I just have to bring it up. If we would, and I'm not saying we don't, chief, but if we would enforce the littering part of it, years ago, it was a police chief, he's been long gone, there's been police chiefs quite a few since. And he was a smoker, and I says, how come people don't get it for littering when they throw it out the window? Well, we just don't. He happened to be a smoker. But I says, how about if I take a cigarette and I tear it apart, and I throw it out the window, and an officer is following, what, get it for littering? I said, oh, it's got to be lit. And it's, so, you know, I don't like the smoking part of it, but I also don't like the littering part. And I know you guys can't be everywhere, but I think when we are made aware, and that happens, I think it'll help the whole situation.
Mr. McSwayne.
We are not forbidding smoking. We're just forbidding smoking in certain places that are used by the public and paid for by everyone. In some cases, the use of these facilities, you can be in rather crowded conditions. If there's a place they can smoke out in a parking lot, there's nothing stopping them from doing that. What we're stopping them is from infringing upon the freedoms of other people to enjoy those things without having to deal with those kind of products.
One thing to consider with that is if they are in a parking lot at a park. I think it's a great discussion, but it does get down to, this is a legal product. And you're, basically, by doing this, we're going to say, you can smoke at the park over here, or you can't park over here, or smoke over here. But in the parking lot, you can. Well, you're still at the park. It just, I don't know, it's slippery. Mr. Bargender.
One more question for Justin. How would this ordinance affect the central Wisconsin fairgrounds?
Right now, it probably prohibits smoking at the fairgrounds during the fair, based off what I know. Could be something the Fair Commission could look at. I'd have to do more research on what, how it might affect them.
So would we want to run this past the Fair Board first before we would consider this ordinance? Because they're part of, you know, I mean, they're part of the park system.
That would be up to this body, how they, I'm not sure happy with that, how that world works. And you pass an ordinance, and then we have, would it be an exception, I guess? The council would have to decide. I guess it's up to you guys.
And just as a comment on that, I can't say for sure. The fairgrounds, is it a park facility? Is it?
It'd be considered a park facility under our public facilities.
And then the other thing you'd have to look at, and, you know, maybe that's something we can do between now and the next reading, the question would then become, have we given away the regulation of that specific consideration, given the fact that we've put it under the Fair Commission? We've basically taken that and administered it. My thought is, no. This is more of a policy, and I think the grounds are owned by the city, but I'd have to really look at how that original, I've seen those documents multiple times, but never in that specific context. So I guess we can review that and make a determination. And if this, if that's a question this body wants answered before this thing gets back to them, then maybe it does need to be brought by the Fair Board to get their input in terms of whether they feel, and I said Fair Board, and I want to be careful about that, too, because you're really talking about the Fair Commission in terms of what they're doing. They basically have the administration of that through the Fair Board. So we want to make sure you're sending it to the right body.
I think it might be considered the same as what we did with the alcohol at the fair grounds this year. I think we, they came and made a request, and I think the police chief approved it, but there was an exception. So maybe that's the same guidelines as they want to come out with a request, and it's up to this body to decide there.
Mr. Pyer.
I know for a fact there's no smoking in any of the buildings at the fair right now. Any place like, in any, like, any of the horse barns or open barns, but there's never been any ban in the grounds itself where there's fresh air. But I know that you can't smoke in any grandstand, either you're not allowed to smoke.
Nick.
As I see it, the problem with smoking is the fact that other people have to breathe in the smoke primarily. Is it possible to amend this ordinance to prohibit the smoking within X number of feet of a person who's, does not consent to breathing that air?
I mean, I'll take that one. That sounds like one heck of an ordinance to write and/or try to enforce. I mean, you know, now you're talking about some very subjective issues. And in terms of, I'm going to speak for the chief in this moment, probably the only time in my life, but just that in enforcement, now you're talking about whether that's offensive to somebody, and it becomes a subjective thing for them to try to make a determination. And then, in addition, because I prosecuted many, many cases over the years now for this municipality, and that becomes one heck of a crazy burden of proof then. So, you know, instead of an officer being
Not an implied consent, a explicit consent.
Correct. But okay, so what that would mean is that for an officer to write a ticket for smoking, the officer would have to go there, get a complainant, be there when that's happening, have the ability to identify a complainant, identify the subject who's doing the violation. And then, when the person wants to fight it, we got to call people in that complained about smoking, and it does create some real interesting questions. And we have this sort of thing. You'd be surprised how often we run into problems who, somebody says, you know, drove by a school bus, and, you know, when the stoplight was out, and when they get subpoenaed, they don't want to have anything to do with it. And you mean you're taking me off of my work, and I'm only getting a five dollar witness fee, and all those sorts of things. On a smoking charge, it could be very difficult. But I think the bigger problem would be, again, that subjective nature of it that comes into play. You know, I think, really, this body's got some questions, and I will write an ordinance if you direct me to do that. But I do identify that that really makes that a tough one to do. And then, more importantly, I think from an administration point of view, to administer that ordinance and prosecute it would become quite burdensome.
Mr. McSwayne.
Yeah, the problem, there's a couple of issues with that. One is, you're promoting confrontation between citizens. The other thing is, some people are going to object to it, but they will not say it, because that's just their personality. And they would end up being abused because they weren't more assertive. And it's something, as a school teacher, that I dealt with a lot of times. It wasn't a matter of, did somebody object to what you're doing to them, or do I decide you can't do it to them, and I don't put them in that position? Because a lot of them will say, it's okay with me, it's not, but they just, they just don't have that personality to do it. And like I said, anything that promotes a confrontation between citizens, I don't think is a good idea.
Mr. Butke.
HEP, this would be a question for you. I don't see at the fairgrounds, a lot of people during the fair, smoking outside. They're normally looking to eat or whatever. But if you made an exception because it is called a park, is that getting us into trouble if you do that? Or would we be better off to not have it as a park so we could allow that?
I mean, you're talking about if you define the fairgrounds as a park, I don't know if you want to start
It is now.
Yeah. I mean, so you could look at that as an issue, if that's something you wanted to forgive. But you are talking about, when you look at the reason, and I, the main thing that I wanted to say here tonight is that there is supporting documentation that is absolutely necessary for this body to make those findings, to try to say that we have a real reason to do this. And if you look at it, it's not because somebody doesn't like it. That's, you know, we've had that discussion here before. This isn't a popularity contest, how many like it or don't like it. The reason that you're doing that, if you look at that material, is because you're finding a specific health and safety reason that smoking creates problems in a secondhand smoke environment, even though it is outside. If you can't make those findings, you must not pass this ordinance. I don't have a position on the ordinance, but I am saying that that's, the whole thing behind this is, we could only defend this ordinance if you make those findings. So looking at the purpose of the ordinance, all these things that we're talking about have very, very little to do with whether or not you should do, you know, pass the ordinance or not, meaning how many people would like it, should it be named a park? And so then, if you look at that as the problem, the one thing that I see is going down the path that you're talking about is, now you're taking an environment, the fair, where we have a larger group of people who may be in this position. And if you're going to say it's bad to have someone exposed to secondhand smoke, even though it's in an outdoor environment, and all those things that are in this documentation that you, again, must all apprise yourself of, then it doesn't make any logical sense to say, but we're going to take it out of that one environment. And that is hard, then, to say that you really made the decision for the right reason, if that's what you were to do. My only hangup in terms of the fair, again, is more of a technical question than that is, you know, has this body somehow given away its authority to do that? I don't believe that it has. I think Justin's right, that this really goes back to the same thing with drinking. We've banned it, but could you come back and ask for an exception? But I need to look at those documents. And as you all are familiar, there's some complex documents that are behind the scenes of how we set up fairgrounds. But that's the thing with respect to this. If you go down the path of, you know, should somebody like it or not like it, and do we make objections, you're missing, the whole reason you're doing this, and again, it's up to this body, but you need to make that finding, and that finding really has nothing to do with whether people like it or not.
Mrs. Sprouse.
So with that said, I would encourage, and maybe Justin has already done this, but I would encourage him, when we discuss this next, to be able to present some scientific studies, or, you know, some health risk studies that do show that smoking in an outdoor environment like a park has been proven to increase the risk of non-smokers who are also at the park.
Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to item T, first reading of ordinance number fourteen twenty-three, amending chapter twenty-five of the Marshfield Municipal Code, presented by Tom Turches, the engineer.
All right. We had an audit of our MS four, which is our municipal separate stormwater sewer system, by the DNR here in the last year. They suggested that we make some changes to that MS four. And one of those things was the addition of an illicit discharge and elimination program. So we added a portion of the ordinance to include illicit discharge and detection and elimination requirements. We also made some updates to the municipal code for chapter twenty-five. I'll quickly try to go through some of those. In sections or articles one and two, the first article being construction site erosion control, we removed finding of fact and purpose. Our city attorney felt those items were really not necessary for the ordinance, so we did remove those, then renumbered this portion of the ordinance. And fee schedule, enforcement, and appeals was moved into the end of our ordinance to combine all of those together as one versus having it in the ordinance two or three. For article two, post-construction stormwater management, which is basically a lot of those ponds or rain gardens that you see, this, we basically, again, removed the findings of fact and purpose and intent out of it, and the fee schedule, and enforcement was moved to the last portion of our municipal code. and the fee schedule and um enforcement was moved to the last portion of our municipal code. The biggest portion of this change of this municipal code, section of municipal code, was the illicit discharge and detection and elimination requirements. Basically, it talks about the types of uh discharge prohibitions, what you can't release into our storm sewer systems or into our rivers or creeks. It talks about suspension of MS four access and our MS four is our municipal separate storm sewer system. So as a city, we have the right to stop somebody from putting something pollution into one of our local storm sewers or creeks. It talks about requirements to prevent, control and reduce stormwater pollutants by use of best management practices. And if you're at all familiar with best management practices, it's like erosion controls, hay bales, inlet protection, silt fence, what you see around construction sites, those are best management protect uh practices. We also have a, a portion that talks about water course protection. And from that, it allows us to go in and make sure people are maintaining properties adjacent to some of our water courses so that you're not storing like, let's say, tires or old cars in, in the bottom of a ditch where uh pollution can be dragged from those locations downstream. There's also a new section about notification of spills related to illicit discharges and how that is handled. And then it talks about enforcement, appeals, cost abatement for violations of illicit discharges and various other items that are associated with those illicit discharges. So are there any questions on revisions to chapter twenty-five of municipal code?
Any questions for Tom?
I know it gets pretty technical and, and uh that's just the way engineers are.
All right, thank you, Tom. Uh, item U, update on plan to purchase and install new enterprise business software presented by Eng.
Thanks, Peter. I'm going to add. And this is an update of the um EBS software selections. They have been looking on in the background for quite some time now. Back in two thousand sixteen, the city did an EBS assessment at the time and we have been using close to ten years of that software at that time. And it was also, we were pausing to evaluate where we are with the software and so on. The challenges that we identified at the time were um the budgeting software was our support. There were poor vendors support um for project applications, especially with the WorkTag um software, it has not met the expectations. There were problem with the integration between the WorkTag and Dynamics GP program. We still have a lot of paper-based processes and we still do. And the time cards and projects is a lot of duplication of hand entries of informations. There's less than optimal reportings. There's ineffective search of transactions. And then our account structures and strings, we have to deal with different structure at different time. So there were a couple of example that finance sent me about um the pain point that we were facing. For example, is we have the schedule written out on the whiteboards for the employees to see, the employees would punch, use a punch clock to clock in and out only to track the incoming and outgoing time. And then the, the time clock software would generate an electronic file for all the time they will enter. But at the end of the day, the supervisor has to sit down and write down the project number for those time they were um split out and so on. The clerks then transfer the information into a spreadsheet and code to the projects. And then the clerks turn in that spreadsheet to the supervisor to get approved the Monday of the payroll week. And then the spreadsheet needs to be include other overtime and so on. I guess doesn't mean to go through all the detail process, but you can see it's manual and as well. You know, manual process and bound for errors as well. For the budgeting software, um, again, I don't want to go through all the detail. Just a couple of highlights out of this slide here. We have a plus of nearly a hundred and ninety employees, but it takes three hundred budgets in our forecaster to um compile them and tie them out. And then there's not a uni, universal modifiers that we could use and say if we have a two percent increase in our utility cost, we could not just punch in the two percent and have it multiply out. We have to manually do those one at a time. So I guess I'm not going to go through the, the rest, but just to show there are many pain points that we have to go through to utilize our current software. And we did look into um other alternative as well. We could try to look at, remove the individual components like WorkTag program that we have issue, or we could try to change the account structure and to re-implement the software again. Again, we have worked with SVA who did the study and at the end it was not cost effective to do that. So some of the thing that we, we want to take that chance to learn some of the desire issues that we want to find out as we look for another software replacement. These are the thing that we want to look for, an enhanced workflow throughout the organizations. Elimination of any duplicate data entry, a more tightly integrated system, which is what we were, we are still lacking of today. And one of the thing that I also did is we did a survey with city employees who were using the software at the time. And through that survey, one of the key thing that stand out is some employee recommend that we look into public sector specific software vendor if we were to do selections again. So the reason is we want to gather those information when we are ready to do the selection, we have those background informations. Again, this is part of that EBS study reported with short-term considerations that the vendors suggested at the time, we could standardize our time collection so that it would be more streamlined. We can do more training and use some of the feature that will not enable in the HR and payroll modules. Or we could look at replacement of budgeting software at the time with adaptive insights. But look at the last line there is, at the end, we didn't do any of that because, you know, let me go to jump next, next slide here, because the long-term consideration is SVA, the vendor that look at this is, they recommend that we consider replace the whole software package. In part is Dynamics GP that we use today. Their estimation is in the few years' time, Microsoft is going to move, uh, forces into moving up to the cloud versions, which is a Dynamics three sixty-five. So no matter how we slice and dice it, at the end, we are looking at replacing the software. So this is what we have done um late last year and early part of this year as part of the preparation for the CIP um process, we, we did some um demo and get some price code from some vendors. And the key thing this time around is we um solicit, solicitate some, some of the public sector vendor like uh Central Square, Tyler and BSN A. So once we got the CBS, CIP approved, then we barely came into high gear in terms of getting more demo um for the software. So what, when we did the early part of the demo, one thing that we learned is to sit through the demo and go through all the software module, it takes too long. It takes a two full day to go through that. So we learned that maybe best to break them into three groups. So we do group one, two and three. By March, we kind of determined that Cronos seems to be a great product for us for the time and attendance piece. And maybe even the um HCM, the hu, uh, human capital management for the HR modules. But once we got the approval for a CIP, we decided that we should pick the three top vendors that are out there and do a runoff demos between them for the group two. And group two is our payroll and the core financial module. So we did that in August. At the end of that demo, it was determined that Tyler, Tyler technology would be the best fit overall for us. But also during the um demo process, we also learned that the payroll and HCM would be best to go together because there are certain information that we need from the HR and to process the payroll. If we have two separate vendors, we would run into having to um transfer the data back and forth. So we did additional demo from Tyler, we request for additional demo from Tyler about the HCM and then we to look into the group three modules that we have, which is um the permits license, animal license and so on. And we did that on October first. So at the, at the end of that um demo, we basically, as of today, we have a tentative selections. So Cronos would be our choice for time and attendance and advanced scheduling. Tyler would be for the HCM payroll, uh, core financial. Plus a few other like animal licenses and code enforcement. For business licenses, permits and inspection, we are still undecided at this time. But we have two site visit schedules. So there's one actually coming up on Thursday, uh, October twenty-fourth that we will be visiting city of Ashkash. We also have a city of Lacrosse scheduled for October thirtieth for the visit. Now, the reason that we end up doing two visits is we can't find one vendor that have the whole, you know, series of modules that would use Tyler. So they are using some evolved planning for permits, you know, for Ashkash and Lacrosse use Tyler, so we have to pick two uh city. This is a slide about the C, the CIP that got approved recently in May. If you look at the last, uh, the bottom line there, essentially we have a hundred and forty-two thousand dollar budgeted for twenty twenty and then, and so on. So there's five years worth of money coming in for these projects, earmark for these projects. And again, we can only do software modules based on the money that we, we anticipate of having uh coming in. So based on that, this is my estimation, again, subject to change. When we have the implementer here on site, we may have to tweak some of this accordingly. So I would say if we were to kick off the project early part of twenty twenty, that the first thing that we will do is to look at the GL and chart of account and get the budgeting software up and running by May of um twenty twenty. Cause some department will need to put their budget into that system. The other thing that we could do concurrently as part of, first part of next year is the HCM recruiting part of the software. After we got those two squared away, then I would say we will move into uh the Cronos time and attendance, payroll and HCM, those three would somewhat go together because you cannot do your payroll processing without knowing certain HR related function like your benefits and deductions and whatnot. Once we get that done, then we can look into core financial uh module. Again, that will take roughly two years to complete. The vendor told us, it typically it takes eighteen months for this kind of project from beginning to end. I suspect we will need a little extra, so. And then from tw- twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we would do animal licenses, business licenses, code enforcement, permits and inspections. And on our fifth year, we can look at advanced schedulings and other EBS module that um our budget could allow. Plus, you know, something that we felt, you know, the benefits outweigh the cost. So special assessment, purchasing or open finance as example. Other than that, again, thanks for the time. Any question for the presentation?
Thank you. Any questions? Nope.
Thank you, it's not a question. This, this is an important checkpoint for the council. I know we've gone through the process with you and talking about this. We brought it through the CIP process that you've agreed to commit six hundred and fifty thousand dollars over five years to upgrade our software, which is badly overdue. It's, you know, uh thirteen, fourteen years old. But we wanted to make sure you knew where this is going, that you felt comfortable, that's thoughtful, it's well planned out. And I think Eng has shown that there's been a lot of staff work that's gone into planning for how and when we would upgrade our financial software. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item D, discuss city policy regarding posting no firearm signs at city hall.
Thank you.
Presented by Steve Burke.
I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Ziegler-Meyer addressed this from public comment earlier. He is the one who wrote an email about a month ago that kind of started this discussion. And as he mentioned, there, there is an ordinance that we have on the books right now. I put it in your packet and it does involve the idea that we can post a city facilities. I'll, I'll read it right now. It says, "The following restrictions shall apply to the carrying of firearms or dangerous weapons." And then it defines under that public building, "No person may enter or remain in a public building which is properly signed while in possession of a firearm or dangerous weapon exposed or concealed." And then the next page, what I put in your packet does have a section noted properly signed that refers to the fact that signs must be not less than five inches by seven inches and that type of thing. What I understand is, is Mr. Ziegler-Meyer's concern is not so much that we have an ordinance. I think he believes that um, doesn't need to be posted on all of our public buildings. Is it appropriate for this building? He's even asked me whether or not uh the city properly authorized this building or any other public buildings to be posted. But at its core, at its roots, at its root um point, the question is whether or not we want to have this building and or other facilities owned and operated by the city posted for no firearms or weapons. And we just bring it to you for review tonight based upon the fact that it was, it was brought up by a resident and council member Spurros asked that we put it on the agenda.
Mr. Budke.
When I was looking at this, in fact, I told Todd before the meeting, I says, I could, I could go either way on this. But thinking about that, uh, he's, you think sidebar comments aren't important sometime Rebecca and I talking? And crooks don't go by ordinances and signs. So I, I guess I'm leading Todd's way a little bit now, uh, actually quite a bit. The problem that I have is, is agile is our police chief is here. If somebody comes in the back, his back is facing somebody coming in. If we had that, we could sort of protect ourselves. I might fumble all over the place and drop the gun or whatever. But I think there's some rationale for it, I, I really do. The way it is now, I mean, we all know criminals don't go by laws and ordinances. And I mean, so that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Mr. McSwain.
All right, can solve our budget problem, let's take away the signs with speed limits. Let's keep all of our laws secret, be a lot of fun enforcing them. If, if anybody has done any supervision, and I've done a lot in, in the business that, that I was in as a school teacher, if you tell somebody that they can't do something and there's not a, a sign posted of it, you're going to hear about it. People that would, would think, you know, I have a right because there's nothing saying I don't. You don't want to have that discussion with a person with a gun. The idea that you're safer because there's more people with guns, it's not verified by any statistics. It shows exactly the opposite. In, in the the idea that people can stop something that better, better than, you know, to help the police, the good guy with a gun idea. Every guy that, that goes out and does all these mass shooting considers themselves a good guy too. If, if you consider, the, the FBI did a study of this where, where citizen intervention in, in shooting i- i- events. They studied a hundred and sixty cases where, where citizens tried to intervene to, to stop something. Of these hundred and sixty cases, twenty-six of them were, were considered to be successful and that they maybe not stopped all ki- killing, but stopped some of it. Of those twenty-six cases, five of the people that did it were armed. The other twenty-one cases, the people were not armed. The people that are doing the shooting, and this is anecdotal. All I know is from what I've heard, you can all verify from what you've heard in the news. When they get stopped, they get stopped because they're reloading. And yeah, we have laws that allow people to have thirty-shot clips. And if you need a thirty-shot clip to hunt or even to defend yourself in your home, you, you got trouble. You shouldn't, shouldn't, you should be out fishing instead of hunting. You, you have people that are going to consider themselves to be okay with handling a gun. There's like three hundred and sixty-some thousand people that are carrying guns. A weapon that's express purpose is to take somebody's life and they think that they're. And they think that they're qualified to use that. When you take a look at the requirements for it, some of it, some of it you could say is 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 okay. You've got you've got training for people in the safety, you know, businesses here. Well, you know, sometimes some of those people aren't using them properly either. Military training. One of the reasons I quit deer hunting was it was a guy, an active military guy. After listening to him talk, seeing him act, I would not go out in the woods unless I had a hill in between me and him. That's no verification. When there was a shooting in a military base a few years ago during the Iraq war, and I was talking to some of my former student athletes that were soldiers, and I said, how would anybody ever attack an army base? I said, "That seems like a dumb place to attack." He says, "The army doesn't let people live ammunition and stuff like that go laying around. They have very strict controls over that." The 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 idea that you have somebody that's going to be deterred by this. One of the, one of the, one of the mass killings was in Texas. A person traveled to Texas. If you think anybody travels to Texas thinking there's not going to be guns around, and they're intimidated from killing, that's nuts. You have, you have all kinds of cases where the people have the guns, they don't use them. There's a lot that goes into whether they're going to use this or not. The chasing the school in Florida. In Vegas, fifty people were killed shot from a casino. It took them ten minutes for anybody to get close to that person. You try taking some money or anything else from a casino in Vegas and see if it takes ten minutes for people with guns to show up. This idea that more guns make things safer just isn't verified. Even in the Wild West, they tame the Wild West by, they actually forbid guns coming into towns. The people that think that they know what they're going to do when bullets start flying, I think are assuming an awful lot. The the very fact that anybody would actually have to kill somebody, that they were even thinking about this, that this is something that they plan that they want to do disturbs me. Like they're acting like they're a bunch of knights and their Excalibur is a thirty eight caliber and they're making the world safer for everybody. That scares me, that attitude. My dad was in World War Two. He taught me an awful lot about guns. And one of the things is, is killing people isn't all that much fun. Some of the people that I had, like again, talking with the Iraq war, they talk about about human beings and people that you knew being turned into meat. And the idea that we have, we have hundreds of thousands of people walking in the state carrying weapons, thinking that that's something that they want to do, that scares me. That if if there's somebody that comes in this place or any of these other places where there's a sign posted, then the police know whoever's got the guns, the bad guy. They shouldn't have to think about that. They should not have to hesitate in saving their own lives and our lives for one second to determine, is that person there to help me or not help me? To say nothing about the fact of whether or not this person's going to be spraying bullets around or what they're going to be doing with the bullets. Those concealed carry, I've checked out the requirements for that. Those things mean about as much about the serious things that you have to have if you're going to be discharging a weapon in public. It says about as much about your capability as staying at a Holiday Inn Express. We spent, we spent money, we did a wise thing in making sure that that the police and the safety people in our city were given communication devices and the best communication we could give them so that we could stop bad things from happening. Now you want to interject an element of uncertainty? A person that has concealed carry doesn't even have to tell the police unless the police ask them for it. We, you put up signs, you make sure that people understand this is forbidden.
Thank you, Mr. Jockic.
Yeah, I can, I can't top that one. I agree with everything Mr. McSwain said. That's where I stand on it. And I should be the one that wants to be careful because back when I was on the Plan Commission in 2013, I was the only one that spoke up against a person requesting the ability to sell guns out of his house. And that gave us fifteen different locations in the city of Marshfield for being, for where you could go to buy a gun. And I was the only one on the Plan Commission that spoke up. I voted against it. And within a week, there was a dead rabbit in the middle of my mat in my front door. That's not a coincidence. Bunnies don't die in your bed, oh, in your front door. And both my cars were keyed. So I'm the one up here should just keep my mouth shut. But the other alternative, I guess, is to put up a sign that says, "There is a gun somewhere up here within the council. You don't know where it is, but every meeting it goes someplace else." That would stop anyone as much as a sign or anything. Maybe, probably not. But I guess I'm not worried. I just, I, I don't know. I'm not sure what the purpose is. That sign's been there for a long time. And it just makes sense. We don't want any guns around here other than those carried by a police officer. I don't know. I don't live in that kind of theory, even though I'm the one that had that bunny put on as to be intimidated.
Thank you, Mr. Presl.
Thank you. I won't be as passionate as my colleagues here, but as someone who as part of my duties, carried a gun for every day, for almost every day for thirty some years, there's a lot of responsibility that comes with that. And I can tell you that no matter if you make a ordinance or a rule that nobody can bring a gun in here or that everybody can bring a gun in here, if you have a sign on the door or not, it's not going to stop someone who has ill intentions. What the sign will do, though, is prevent that accident from happening. Someone, an employee bringing a gun to work and leaving it in their desk and it falling into the wrong hands. It's going to prevent the employee from showing it to his friends and someone accidentally shooting himself. The sign is there to present, prevent common sense people from bringing a gun into the building. Nothing is going to prevent the person who's coming in here with ill intent from bringing a gun into the building, no matter how many of us are armed.
Thank you, Mrs. Spieros.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to come at it from a different angle, actually. I think that when you post a sign like that, you know, you can't, you can't regulate morality, okay? People who participate in mass shootings, the shooters, you can't, there's no rules you're going to set that that are going to make them not go out and commit a crime. I think what signs like this do is you advertise that you have everybody in your building defenseless. Mass shootings have occurred in schools, they've occurred on military bases. Those are the primary places that they've occurred, both of which are gun free zones. Schools are always gun free. Military bases are always gun free. According to the Crime Prevention Research Center from the nineteen fifties through June fifteenth of 2018, which was just a year ago, ninety seven point eight percent of mass shootings have occurred on gun free zones with just two point two percent occurring where citizens are allowed to have firearms with them. Those are the facts. I don't, you know, you can't dispute the facts. There's numbers associated with those. They know where these mass shootings have occurred and they've primarily occurred in gun free zones. I think that when you put, set up a sign out there, that's what you're doing. You're announcing that people who will follow the law will, that they came in here and they put their guns, they left their guns in the car. Because the mass shooters, they don't give, they don't give any craps about whether you have a sign or don't have a sign. If they have an intention, they're coming in. I personally would feel, you know, that I have a fighting chance against somebody if I'm able to carry my own gun. The state of Wisconsin, in the State House, there is no such signs you are able to carry even in the state of Wisconsin.
Thank you, Mr. Fire.
We just installed a detection system in the courthouse in Rapids. And we were talking at a public safety meeting the other day, and the sheriff said that the first week he confiscated three, well, didn't confiscate three guns, and they had concealed weapon permits. Now, he said that when you file a permit in there, it says you will not carry a weapon in a public building, in a government building, which means signed or not, you're not supposed to carry a sign. He said, "The signs out at the sidewalk will tell these people, don't bring your gun in." Well, they walked in and they were shocked that they couldn't carry their gun in the courthouse. And they know that. So I think that you got to look at this a different way. You know, if the sign's there, the concealed guy will remember, I'm not supposed to bring it in, and he won't. And if he's got intent, he doesn't care anyway. He'll even try to sneak it through a metal detector if he can, so. I was in the military. I worked on a lot of guns. I'm not a gun fanatic. I don't own a gun right now, but I think that those signs aren't hurting a thing. And I I always said, where I sit here, somebody comes in, I'm probably lucky when I'm sitting over in a corner and I'm going to reel over before the bullets start flying.
Thank you, Mrs. Spieros.
Okay, so I'm curious as to why he would have said that, because I don't believe that's true. I don't believe that when you do sign up or when you, when you get your carrying concealed license, that it forbids you from carrying it into
A government building.
Government buildings. Because I don't understand then why the state Capitol you're allowed to carry into that. And I know that for a fact. I know you are absolutely allowed to carry a weapon into the state Capitol of Wisconsin. So I would look for hap to let us know whether he knows if that is indeed the truth or not.
So I'm going to say on the front end of this that I have to confess that I'm not unbiased in this. I wrote the Minnesota State Constitutional Amendment that provided a bill of rights for firearms possession. So I'm going to completely remove myself from any personal comment. I'll say the way the law works in regard to that is I think that there is a prohibition against federal buildings. And we also have a requirement under state statute here that you can't carry in a courthouse. And I think that's, you know, they may have been addressing it in that sense, that you can't carry it in a courthouse. So they know that if they brought a concealed weapon into a courthouse, whether you got a permit or not, you can't do it. The exception being a state prosecutor with permission and the judge has a right to carry within a courthouse. So I'm going to stick purely to the law in regard to those issues.
Mr. McSwain.
Regardless of anything else, if there's multiple people with a gun in a shooting situation, you're making this situation worse for the people that aren't supposed to be carrying guns to settle it. How are they supposed to know who you are? How are they supposed to know that? Let's say I was a teacher and I was armed. As this came up all the time, kids would ask about this. I'd say, me having a gun would be one thing, but when I think of some of the other people that are in this building having guns, that scares me. I'm almost certain that somebody would, there'd be an accident. There's over, there's between four and five hundred accidental killings a year with guns. But the police coming in, they have to know who's the good guy, who's the bad guy? The bad guy's the guy with the gun if you're not supposed to have a gun. That makes it nice and clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Spieros.
I just want to just ask a couple of questions then of Mr. McSwain. Have you ever been in a mass shooting? No, I'm going to assume the answer is no. I'm not going to wait for you to answer. So everything that you just said is speculative. It's an opinion that you have. You've never been in a mass shooting, so you don't know that situation. It's all speculative on your part, and that's, I'm going to end it at that.
I think we can all see this highly charged conversation, which makes it very easy to go back to the code. If you look at the code, if this is to be considered and you all are going to decide that, then are you going to then do the same thing? Because in our code, it says it's not allowed in school property, courtrooms, which this is a courtroom, public building, private buildings that are properly signed. All of these different areas, are we going to revisit them all? And everybody is entitled to their opinion. There's a lot of them flying around here, and that's exactly what they are. It's opinions. Everybody's entitled to that. But I think we have to, the question is, do you want to consider changing this to what it currently is? And pursue that, I believe. That's what we're
Yeah, I guess I can see the city attorney wants to comment here in a minute, but I think that is the root question. Is there enough interest on this body to want to consider, I would think, modifying the ordinance in some sense? I know what Mr. Ziegler Meyer is saying. He's saying that the ordinance doesn't need to be amended. You just have to make a decision consciously not to post this building. But I would think it'd be more appropriate to look at the ordinance itself as a means of making the change rather than just ignoring it to the extent of not posting a city building that you would expect to fit under Sub B three.
Just to address the code, the code is a mirror, basically, of state law, and it has to be. We're talking about, much like we've discussed on other occasions, certain areas, public transportation, alcohol regulation, and in this case firearms. We're preempted from doing something and sort of recognize that that the state or federal government stands in a better position to make those rules to unify them. So our code is really a mirror of the state statute. The real question isn't really changing the code. The real question would be, and I wasn't able to answer this precisely, but my recollection when this was passed was that there was a discussion specifically to try to prohibit firearms in the municipal buildings, which would have included the city hall at the time. But again, I haven't looked at the history on that. But if this body was going to do something, I think the thing that it would do is make a decision whether it wants to, by policy, remove us from the provision that is posted. Because when Mr. Ziegler Meyer had asked the question about, you know, the posting or how that comes about, really, the way the code reads and really the way the statute reads is that firearms are prohibited, with the exception of those ones that are noted as required to be prohibited. Firearms are allowed any place unless you specifically post it and exempt it out. So the real question is just simply, do we want to post the city hall or post other municipal buildings different than what you've done? So it's really a decision this body can make, but that's where it would go. It wouldn't be a decision to change our code.
I stand corrected.
So then the question then tonight is, do we want to take the sign down?
Yeah. Do you want to post this building and or other city facilities? No firearms or weapons permitted, which would be in accordance with this, but which we're not required to. And if you, I mean, currently, we have this building posted. It would take an affirmative action to say, no, we don't want to. We don't think that that's necessary or appropriate.
Mr. Buckey.
I would just ask before we make a decision on that, that we have a new council member coming on and Mr. Witts, I think we should have a full council, of course, something as serious as it's.
Put it on the next agenda? Would that be, you know, Rick, would you mind coming up for a second? I'm sorry, Chief Graham.
This whole time I've been debating whether I want my back to the door or my back to this body. I have no idea how to answer that. Anyway, go ahead.
So we're not getting into the Second Amendment debate. That's settled. As the chief, do you think that there's benefit to a sign? Or do or do you think that it's, do you think it's a deterrent or do you think it's a, come on in?
A deterrent to who? You know, I mean, yeah, I mean, if somebody sees a sign and they're a concealed carry holder or they're an open carry individual, which, I mean, open carry is allowed throughout the city. You know, I mean, you could have somebody walking down Central Avenue with a rifle or shotgun slung, and there's nothing illegal about that as long as there's not a convicted felon. There's nothing wrong with, I mean, I see, I see people walking around Walmart with a gun on their hip, and there's nothing illegal with that because it's not posted. I think that if an individual, like you said, I mean, I'm not taking a stance one way or another unless you ask me to, but if an individual wants to come in here and do harm, they're going to, regardless of going to, regardless of if it's a gun-free school zone, if it's a hospital, if it's the city hall, it's going to happen regardless. So just to, just to correct a couple of things, it talks about, our ordinance along with state statute talks about government buildings or public buildings, but it does exempt concealed carry holders, it does exempt law enforcement from, from that. So I mean, if you're a concealed carry holder, you can walk into even a courtroom, according to this, because it says, in accordance with state statute, and the state statute says any government building that, where somebody is a concealed carry holder, or law enforcement, or retired law enforcement, but has kept up their certification. So will a sign deter somebody from doing bad things? No. It won't. But I don't have any statistics to prove that it hasn't ever, I guess. I just know that there's been places that have been signed throughout the world, probably, that bad things have happened in. You never know how many things are deterred, I mean, how do you measure that? You only know how many people die from smoking, not how many people live from not smoking. I mean, it's one of those, you know, statistics sets, it's really hard to prove, you can make assumptions.
And sir, your, your issue was just with the sign, it's...
Yes, I do. It's a good idea. As I attend meetings, I'm in the back corner of the room, and I don't want, I want to do a whole case study.
Thank you. All right, so I think what we'll do is, we'll put this to the next...
Can I ask you a question? Oh, and I, you feel threatened by walking around in this building?
Yes, I do. I was a hunter, that, I don't know what I'm, if, if, if any crazy person used to violate another area, since I'm trying to do it. I'm sure that, in my life, I've...
So I think then, is it a general idea here that we suspend this for the next agenda when we have two other council people here?
Yeah, we'll put it on as an action for the November 12th meeting, when we hopefully have a full complement of people.
All right, thank you very much. Item W, authorize creation of complete count committee presented by Steve Barr.
Thank you. The 2000 census, I'm sorry, 2020 census is really beginning to crank up. It's important for a number of reasons. I don't think I need to tell you what some of them are, but I'll still do it anyway. You know, getting a full count of our community helps us in terms of making sure that we're represented well, in terms of possible aid, you know, to communities. A number of reasons why it's good to have everyone counted in our population. So, but oftentimes, we end up with census that aren't full and don't count everybody for a variety of reasons. We have apartment buildings, we have other things that sometimes they're not fully represented. So the suggestion has been made by the Census Bureau that all communities have a complete count committee, and that group would be entrusted with doing public relations, trying to work with area groups to try and make sure the word gets out, for everyone to fill out their census forms. The suggestion is made that this committee should be including people like business leaders, community leaders, maybe faith-based groups, anybody who can help us get the word out. Please get those census forms completed and turned in. So what we'd like to do is get you to authorize us to have the mayor appoint a complete, complete count committee, and using guidelines provided by the Census Bureau, to try and motivate people to be aware of and participate in the 2020 census.
Thank you, there, Mr. Jockeck, your motion.
Hey, hey.
And a second by Mr. Butky, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
I don't have the vote box on my, on my screen here. Yeah. What, what's stopping us from getting to the end here? Is it working?
Technology.
Yeah. You have to do this by hand.
Do we just do a hand?
By hand, yeah.
Yeah. All those in favor then? There it went, never mind. Everybody's in favor. That's good. Everyone's happy. Item X, adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 19.851G. Conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy, be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Possible litigation involving development agreement and TID number seven. Possible litigation involving copyright issue. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion by Mr. Jockeck, second by Mr. Butky. Please vote.
I never do.
Mr. Fire, Mr. Jockeck?
We're busy.
There we go. It will take five minutes.